All right, folks, it is six o'clock. It is Monday, November 10th, and we are calling, I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the common council to order, noting that it is on a Monday night rather than a Tuesday night as we celebrate Veterans Day tomorrow. So we'll start with roll call, Collette. Barbara Doss?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Stephen Badger?
Epsom.
Kathy Cobb?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Tony McCall?
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. If you want action, separate action, please let me know. We have the council meeting minutes from October 28th, the regular meeting. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report for October, appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I am reporting, appointing George Kruger to the airport commission. Licenses, as in your packet, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol and taxi driver licenses. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve all items listed under consent agenda.
Second, Kate Collette will vote. Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And I will welcome Kyle to the meeting tonight. He's a business communications student and is here observing us. Any other comments, observations, or petitions, any announcements?
Reminder that the city hall tomorrow is going to be closed in recognition of Veterans Day.
Including the senior center, right? Okay, any, and yeah, okay, there's no, there's no ceremony in the park, though. There are ceremonies in the schools tomorrow, but not in the park. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move on to the reports then that were in the packet. The first is from boards, commissions, and committees, the commission and agent Kathy.
Nothing else to report.
I would report on your behalf, though, that the senior center Christmas party has been scheduled for December 10th at the Brasky. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation, Bob?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Have they dug, is the hole being filled over at the swimming pool?
There's a lot of rocks in it, has some pipes in it. I mean, they're really moving along.
Okay, museum board. I don't know who that would be. That must be Steve. Okay, anything, Cody, that you want to?
No, nothing else to add.
Okay. Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Um, nothing specific. I just do want to report, though, we had a county enforcement meeting this morning and they did confirm that we have received the grant for the feasibility study for, to look at the dispatch. So that's a good move.
Okay, other reports that were in the packet, the water and sewer financial report for October, the airport financial report for October, the aquatic center progress update from Clint, and department progress reports. Any questions on any of these? Collette, do you have enough, well, do you have enough election workers? I know you said you had been training some, not.
Okay, we're recruiting currently.
You're currently recruiting for election?
For election workers for next year, yeah, actually for the next two years.
And do the, is there an application online, or do people just stop in?
There is an application on the city website, under the city clerk, under elections, or they can certainly stop into the city clerk office, and we have applications here at the office, too.
Excellent. Anybody with anything else? All right, then, let's move on to the action items on our agenda. First is contract nine dash twenty-five, snow and ice removal. Howard? And how timely?
Yeah, no kidding. We have an ordinance requiring property owners to remove snow and ice. If they fail to do so, we are authorized to have it removed and bill the owner plus an administrative fee. This year, we received one bid from Holman Lawn Care. They have done it in the past. Their bid is $150 per sidewalk regardless of length or width for snow removal only, and an additional charge of $50 if the contractor must salt and scrape the sidewalk as well. We impose a $60 administrative fee under the administrative fee schedule. That would mean that the property owner would be charged $210 for snow only, or $260 for snow and ice with scraping. Recommending that we award the contract to Holman for their prices, $150 for snow and $200 for snow and ice.
Questions? Do I hear a motion?
You know what? I did have a question. The, this will go out. How will people know about this? Through the water bill, or how will they know about, I know most people do know, that if they don't clear their snow, that there is a fine, but are we doing any push?
Perhaps we should do a press release that goes to the newspaper.
I believe it was in the newspaper during the last, reporting at the last, from the last council meeting, but we will chat.
Maybe we could just do one specific one, that's, that has a headline, something about snow and ice removal instead of buried in amongst other things.
So we'll, we'll work together on, on something like that. Plus, our procedure is that our code enforcement inspector goes out and puts a door hanger on the, the door saying you've got 24 hours to clear it. So it's, it should not be a surprise.
Well, it probably shouldn't be a surprise, but maybe forewarned is forearmed, and it's kind of hard to find somebody to do your snow after it's now iced up and stuff. So maybe, maybe kind of a press release with an explanation in the newspaper would be good, including the process that says there are door hangers, et cetera. Okay, now do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. I move to award contract nine dash twenty-five, snow and ice removal to Holman Lawn Care and Snow Removal LLC for the bid price of $150 per location for snow removal only, and $200 per location for snow and ice removal.
Second hit.
I, there's a motion by Bob, second by Lynn, to approve this contract with Holman Lawn and Lawn Care and Snow Removal. We'll vote. Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have Resolution twenty-five dash seventeen, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $1.585 million in water and sewer system revenue bonds, series 2025B of the City of Platteville, Grant County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds.
Thank you. So we do have Brian with us tonight remotely, and I'll hand over to him in just a moment, but to introduce this item, this is for now the utility bond issue. Since we have been doing major undertaking of improvements to the, to the wastewater treatment plant, we have been borrowing every year for the utility. That was something that we did not do up until a few years ago. And so this, again, is a borrow for the utility. They are revenue bonds, which means that they do not count against our geo debt. And you can see there in the staff note that the projects that are being funded through these bonds, including the Pine Street Water Main Replacement Project, which we You're shaking your head at me, Madam President? So the Pine Street Water Main Project is part of what we are funding through these bonds. I hope that's not a surprise. And, and so I'll hand over to Brian just to give you some more specifics on the pre-sale report that was included in the packet.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Are you at the Greenberg game?
Not. I, I'm, I'm in my house, which is much warmer, so we'll, we'll stick, stick to that. Thank you for having me. I believe you all have the pre-sale report in your packets. So just a note on kind of the executive summary, those first couple of pages. As Nicola mentioned, this is kind of an annual process for the utilities to issue the revenue bonds, which do pledge revenues of the utility systems and not your general obligation authority. We are offering these in a similar manner to, you know, previous years, as well as what just happened with the general obligation borrowing, wherein all of the components in the executive summary, so the items on page one through four, are pretty much all the same. We're going out to the open market on a competitive basis. We have a call feature. We're going to get these rated, and beyond that, kind of the same pricing parameters. The one difference between the geo issue is we are doing a parameter sale. You've done this in the past. What this is designed to do is to allow the city to award and hold the sale on a non-meeting night, primarily because we need some time between you greenlighting the process tonight to sale, as well as we need time to close before year end so that the audit numbers looked correct in terms of we've borrowed for these projects. So with that, we're looking to actually sell these on December 3rd, and that is a Wednesday, so kind of a non-meeting night. It also affords us to have an off day in terms of other communities potentially issuing on Mondays and Tuesdays. So again, you, you've done this before in the past. I can't recall off the top of my head if it was last year or the year before. I think it was two years ago that I'm remembering, but you're doing a parameter sale, which is basically an off-meeting sale. So on that, just to note that city staff will have authorization to award the sale as long as it falls within the parameters. So those parameters are mentioned on bottom of page two and top of page three. The point of all that is to say, we don't want, you know, the market to go crazy and staff not have the authorization to reject the bids. But obviously, if a market event happens like that, regardless of how we're selling it, we're probably pulling the sale anyway. So that's kind of all of the sale components. When you get into the tables, which kind of start on page seven, or excuse me, page six of the document, page seven if you're on a PDF of it, that'll show how we get to the 1.5 million. If you do recall, every year, we go through a financial management plan with the utilities and determine kind of at the time of financing execution, how much cash we're going to apply from the utilities. So here, we had 1.9 of projects, and we're going to apply 400,000 of cash to this deal. So that's kind of how we get back down to the 1.5 in terms of total borrowing amount, and then that's split between the utilities. The rest of the presentation is just identifying how we're structuring the debt, and same message as every year. We want to structure that so on a combined basis, your debt coverage is 1.6, and what that basically means is you take all the cash revenues of the utilities minus the cash expenditures, and what's left over should be a dollar and six cents for every dollar of debt service. So we've achieved such a structuring with what's being presented to you tonight. And then the last page, I'll just note kind of a similar note, as mentioned during the general obligation sale award a couple of weeks ago when I was there. The bond market has cooled off, which is very good news for the city, so we do expect an advantageous sale relative to had we sold this, you know, middle of summer, as kind of shown on that chart. This is kind of the regular timing that we've gotten accustomed to with the city to issue the revenue bonds during this time. You can kind of see, if you look at December 2024 on this chart way on the left, that was kind of the lowest point in time last year as well. So we're hoping for similar results. We're seeing the market trend in the right direction, structured appropriately. I think the big takeaway is, is a parameter sale, so this won't be brought back to a meeting for formal adoption, but certainly staff can, you know, show you the sale day report after the sales occurred and presuming it's authorized. So, any questions?
Questions? Brian, what happens if we don't do a project?
You can use it for any public improvement for the utilities. So the purpose of these is going to be designated for, you know, system improvements to the water and sewer utility. So if for some reason the debt is authorized, but let's say the project at a future point is not, you could always use those funds for different water and sewer project, and you got about three years of a spend down on those.
Right. Any other questions? So this action is really to authorize this as a parameter sale, which means we're actually authorizing staff to make the, to approve the sale when the, when the, the rating comes in.
It's come in, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Twenty-five seventeen, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $1,585,000 water system revenue bonds, series 2025B of the City of Platteville, Grant County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds.
Second hit.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy, Kathy, and a second by Lynn to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash seventeen. Collette will vote. Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes.
Motion carries. That ends our action items for tonight, so we'll move on to our information and discussion items, the first of which is Resolution twenty-five, yet to be, yet to be XX, I guess, City of Platteville, 2026 fee schedule. And Collette, I guess this is yours.
I guess. So annually, staff review the fees charged by the City of Platteville for various licenses, permits, inspections, programming, so on, and have suggested the following changes to the current fee schedule. So in your packet, you'll see the fee schedule with the changes in red. On page four through five, the building inspection, there's several changes to the minimums in the fees. On page eight, under the library, there's a change to the community room qualification for the fee. On page nine and 10 for the museum, there's admission fee increases. They, there's the addition of the museum after dark, and a couple of program increases. On page 11 through 13, under Parks and Recreation, they're adding non-resident rental fees for the Brasky Center, and the addition of non-resident fees for the pool pass and daily fees. On page 14, Planning and Development, there's no increases in fees, but there's some transfer of fees from the building inspection. And page 16 and 17, Public Works and Cemetery, you'll see increase to cemetery fees. The recommendation is that the resolution be approved demanding the City of Platteville fee schedule for 2026. Questions?
I had questions.
I have a couple. Big footwell in our packet, it's page 234, under Parks and Rec. Like pool fees. For $4, the change would be for a non-resident per person, $6? Is that? And it's, it seems like, because we're, the amount of money taxpayers are putting in that, I would almost think that a non-resident fee would be a little higher than that.
Yeah, all I can say is Kathy, the, the committee reviewed all of them. We gathered all the information from surrounding pools, and they actually reviewed it a couple, three times before they decided on recommending $6. You can see the, the family non-resident rate for family members went up 10. So that is, you know, if you had three people, that's 30 more dollars, you know, so that's a little higher. But that is their recommendation. It is still a bargain, but it's, it's right there where other pool now charges, and that tops are like $7.
I guess I, I also was kind of, I've been following pools and pool charges. There are several pools around that have a, you can buy like a card that, you know, maybe it's 10, it's, it's a punch card or whatever, and so you buy the card and then you get like 10 punches, and it seemed to me that that could be a helpful thing to do, to have. So I was kind of wondering why we didn't go to some kind of card or punch card.
It could be. We looked at about 10 area pools, and none of those pools had that listed in their fee schedule.
Really?
Really.
Because I thought Lancaster did that.
It wasn't in anybody's fee schedules, and we took them offline.
Really? I was thinking, you know, it's like anything else. If you buy a pass and you get 10 punches, and well, you think you might go, but you know, it's kind of non-refundable, and so you only go seven times. So I mean, you paid it seems to me like a punch card could be a very hopeful kind of thing.
Yeah, I'll bring that up to committee. That could be a good idea. We didn't, we didn't explore it because we didn't see anybody with that same idea.
How does it work exactly?
Well, you, you pay a certain amount with a punch card. So let's say maybe it's, so an individual pack, you know, maybe it's $4 a person, so you may pay, for a punch card, you may pay $36 instead of 40. So it looks like you get a discount, but there's no refund. So if you don't use your 10 punches, then you know, you've paid money, you didn't.
How about the reverse? Like you get a card every time you come, like you get the punch card the first time you come and punch it, and when you get to 10, your next one is free.
Well, that's an interesting concept, too.
I don't know. I, I think a lot of people
Sounds like a little bit of work.
Yeah, I, I do think it's good to keep it simple, and a lot of people just get the summer passes.
Right. Right.
But that is something to think about, for sure.
So you might want to do a little, maybe it was, maybe it was the pool in Galena. I don't, I don't remember what pool it was. Any other questions on that?
I don't have it on the pool, but can we pop up to the Brasky Center?
Sure.
I just want to clarify, the, the fee schedule is staying the same, but what is in red is in our non-resident, so that, so has that not been in play before?
Nope.
So this is, okay.
Yep. And it should be fairly easy to track because they all, you know, take a permit for it, and they have to put in their address and so.
How do you determine residency?
City of Platteville. That's their access.
Just asking, okay? I want to go back to the building inspection fees. And I'm not going to, I'm, my question is, how are we making contractors aware of these changes?
Well, every year, we, we make these changes that, we put it out on our website, and when they come in, we make them aware that the fees are changing, you know, if they come in.
These are substantial.
Well, yeah, this, in this case, there are significant differences because we're contracting out the inspection services.
So this is a substantial difference. So I believe it's in our best interest to make contact with people who may be builders or what in the area, or even perhaps do a press release that says this is going to happen. Because if, if I'm used to, you know, like a five or a six percent, maybe 2% increase, and all of a sudden, things go from, you know, there's fees for things that there were never fees before for, I mean, and I'm, I'm doing my figuring now, and I'm, I'm working with Kathy, and I'm going to build her a new house, and all of a sudden, if all of these fees go up, you know, I need to know that now. I don't need to know that when all of a sudden I come in to buy them, and you say they're more. So I think to, to show good faith and to preserve good relations, we need to reach out to people and say, these have changed, and this is what it's going to be. Is that possible?
We can do a press release of some sort, yeah.
And, and maybe even look at who you've, who've gotten the most, if you've got contractors or whoever have gotten a lot of permits for whatever, you might want to just drop a note to those folks. I mean, it's
Send them the press release.
Yeah, send them the press release or whatever, because I think, I think it's a substantial difference. It's not like, you know, I'm not going to say the same for Cody. If it's going to go up a dollar, it's, you know, that's not, I mean, that may be substantial revenue over the year, but it's not substantial for a person.
Joe, I'm curious, did you ever figure, because I know there are a lot of substantial increases, but there are also a lot of items that have been deleted.
There, there are a lot of, I would consider it reorganization.
Yeah, so overall, isn't
Overall, I would say our fees are, are not going up. They're, they're much different. The categories are much different, but overall, I don't see a big increase. It's just, most, like I said, most of it is the, the way general engineering structures, their fees was different than what we had structured it. So a lot of it's just moving things around and re-categorizing them.
I was also going to about, ask about the park impact fees. We still get those as a city, I assume.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's, that's a different statute.
I mean,
The, the reason they're in building inspection is because by law, we have to collect it at the time the building permit is paid for.
I, I just think that it would, it would be better for us as a city to be proactive and tell people rather than to have them discover it. And, you know, we can argue all day about who should know what and when, but a little proactivity on our part would be good. Any other questions on the fee schedule?
And that will go on for action.
I might make the same comment, though, about under Public Works with the
The funeral directors are aware of this?
Of these changes, so, because they'll relay them on to the families.
Yeah. So they need to be. And there aren't that many funeral homes around. All right, that will then go for action at our next meeting. Next on the agenda is modification to the maximum value limit for the affordable housing program.
Yes, so at the last meeting, Carson, I don't remember his last name, brought up the question or asked if the council would consider making a change to the value in our affordable home improvement program. So as I mentioned last time, that was a program we adopted in 2020. It was an extension of TID4, provided the funds. So as part of that, the, the funds have to be used for affordable housing purposes. So back then, we, in 2020, we looked at, you know, other funding for state programs and federal programs wherever we could find, and looked at our and looked at our median housing values and so forth. And we kind of settled on the 150,000 value as something that we could justify being considered affordable. So obviously it's, it's, I, I don't think anybody's going to question the fact that things have gone up significantly since then, but I did want to try to provide some documentation on an increase in the value. So I did find a, Wida has a, a home price calculator that I was able to plug in $150,000 from 2020 and see what that number looks like now. And that would show an increase to $184,000. And then the Bureau of Labor Statistics and Federal Reserve Bank, I found some online CPI inflation calculators. So I put in $150,000 in those. And one came up at 188,000, 186,000. So obviously the three of those are using similar numbers because they all kind of fall into a very tight number. And then just for comparison, I looked at the Zillow on their website, they have a home value index. So you can see increase in home values based on their data. So the 32% increase from 2020 to 2025 would result in a $150,000 home back then being worth 198,000. So which kind of makes sense because the, the, the data that I've seen shows that the housing prices are increasing faster than the CPI. So that holds true there. So the, the short answer is I think we've got plenty of documentation to show that, you know, an increase up to 185,000 would be perfectly justified. You wouldn't have to go that much of an increase if you didn't want to, but I think we have plenty of justification to raise that number, the maximum value from 150,000 to 185,000.
Questions on that? Our comments? That seems reasonable. I had asked about our, another of our parameters was that the home had to be built before 1950. Prior to 1950.
Right. So the, that date kind of came about when we were working on this program, setting it up. We were talking to a lot of communities, a lot of bankers, realtors locally. And one of the goals of the program was try to get some of these homes that were owner occupied, had converted to renter occupied to get those to convert back to owner occupied. And one thing that the realtors and the bankers both were agreed on is for whatever reason, it seemed like the pre-world war two homes needed the most attention. Anything newer than that, people were willing to buy and fix up on their own and convert back to owner occupied. But there was more of a hindrance for people to do that with the older homes. So they needed a little bit more incentive to do that. Otherwise it seemed like they would just remain, they were more likely to remain rental properties. So we thought the, we'd get the most bang for our buck to focus on the older homes. But there, there's no, I mean, that's not tied to the affordable housing part. That's just our local decision. So we can set that age anywhere we want, or we don't have to have one. That was just a thinking at that time was that's kind of the where we wanted to focus the, the funding.
I think you put in in our packets this time, I think we had a report from you in progress report. Is that correct?
Yeah, just the, the loans that have been issued so far.
Issued.
All right.
I, I was trying to, have you had people who have come in with like a house built in 1951 or?
I, it's so far I have not seen that as a hindrance. I haven't had people, you know, asking about it. You know, they may have looked at the paperwork and realized that it didn't qualify and didn't bother to contact me, but I have not had a lot of people asking me, you know, for assistance on a newer property.
And, and you haven't really tracked. I mean, when I looked at your spreadsheet, it really doesn't say when the home was built.
Oh, that's, there's something I check when they apply for assistance to make sure it qualifies.
Be interesting to know if they're all toward toward 1950 or if they're all significantly older.
What I can think of are significantly older.
All right. So at this point in time, the, the recommendation from staff is to move from 150 to 185 as the as the value of the home.
That's based on the assessed value.
Based on assessed value. Any additional questions? I would just ask you to look back and see if you can see when these homes were built and sometimes I think 1950 wasn't that long ago. Other times I think 1950 was quite a while ago. Several people in this room that were never born, even in 1950. Probably not even in 1955. Maybe not even in 1960. Look at him. Look at him. I look Cody, Cody, they're just laughing. All right. Twenty twenty six budget update.
Thank you. So we've been going through the budget cycle for a long time now, starting back in July. And that's staff starts in July, but the, the council has also been involved with the budget. We have discussed it over several meetings and had presentations on it. And that culminated in the last meeting with the council making a couple of adjustments to the city manager budget. Those adjustments were the senior center membership fee was removed. And the increase in tax levy support was made to cover that difference in revenue. And then also the, in the capital improvement budget, the museum's Hanma Robbins attic insulation project was added at a cost of 65,000 additional dollars to the 20,000 that was already in the museum CIP. And that also increased the tax levy. So the council had directed me to make sure that we still qualified for the expenditure restraint incentive, which I did. And I just was looping back to the council to provide you with information on how that was accomplished. So we did have to move the museum program instead of building inspection in order to generate enough space to still qualify for the expenditure restraint incentive. So that was a change and that change is reflected in the documents I provided, the two summaries. Then also the 2025 A promissory notes sold. And so we were able to identify exactly what the debt service on those notes would be in 2026. So the budget was also updated with that information. The summaries show you the, the operating budget, the items in red represent numbers that changed. And then the third page is the capital improvement budget summary. Also identifying the changes to the museum and to the overall levy for the attic insulation project. Are there any questions?
Welcome. Thank you, Nicola.
Well, just to let the council know for those that may be new to the process. So the budget will now come back to the council at the next meeting for adoption.
It'll come as a public hearing, right?
It will be a public hearing, yes.
Okay. So it'll come as a public hearing, which means prior to the council meeting. Or at the beginning of the council meeting, prior to anything else, we'll have the budget hearing where we, it's very formal, you know, citizens can speak in favor, speak against, speak in general. Then after the public hearing is closed, then we have a, a vote. So that kind of goes in that way. So it's a more formal kind of thing than just being an agenda item. Okay, that, we're at the bottom of our agenda. The other thing that we're doing at our next meeting is the position opening in, in District Four is open, we're accepting applications or I guess that's what you call it, accepting applications through this Friday, November 14th. And then prior to the council meeting, I, I suspect we ought to schedule probably a five o'clock council special meeting. And we know, I, I mean, I have asked folks for questions. I think this time we've talked about and I've taken comments from people. I think we'll have it as a forum this time. So well, each candidate is supposed to give a, an application that answers several questions. And I've asked all council members to submit questions. And then we would have the count, those folks sit here and we would all at the same time and we would ask questions. And so if there are six of them, then, and there are, we would ask the first person answer the question first, but then all five to answer. The next question, the second person would ask, answer first and then the red four, and then the next one. And the next question, that would be the third person. So that everybody gets a chance to be the first and the last to answer a question. So I think we've done that. Actually, some folks in our staff here have seen that play out when we've interviewed city manager candidates. We've done similar. So that's a process that we've used pretty successfully. So we will do that then on November. I believe that's Tuesday, November 25th. I believe that's
Five o'clock.
And we would be looking at five o'clock for the candidate forum, I guess you'd call it. And then six o'clock for the meeting.
Barbara, will we do anything differently if there happens to be a tie?
Well, that's a good question because I, the question is, and I don't know if that's our question or if that's somebody else's question, but there are six of us. And if all six are here, does, if we took a vote and three people voted for one candidate, does, do three elect or is, is it a majority four if there are six? So it would take four to elect. That's what I thought. I didn't think three could elect. So I guess that if we come to the point, then maybe we could if we come to a tie like three, three or one, two, one, I guess we all maybe have to ask more questions.
I, I would like that.
Yeah. Then we would ask more questions. That's why we maybe should start at five instead of instead of five thirty. Okay. And these questions, I, I passed out the questions that I've received. I've suggested that we not ask the questions that they're supposed to answer. They're supposed to answer, if they can't follow simple instructions and don't answer the questions, I think that says something about the candidate. So if the can't, if, if, if the questions aren't answered in their letter, then it, it says something about them. And then we have, so if anybody has other questions, I wanted to compile them because then we, you're not sitting here thinking of a question and not, you know, I've seen that happen too, where I have to, I have to formulate my question. That means like, I'm not really listening to your question. So I think it's important. We all listen to each other's questions. So that's why we need to have some. Okay. And that's what I know about that. Do I hear another motion?
Back in it.
Okay. We have a motion by Kathy and a second by Lynn to adjourn. Colette?
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Motion carries.